K L T V Audio check, K L T V Audio check. K L T V Audio check, K L T V Audio check.
K L T V Audio check, K L T V Audio check.
Make sure my mic was off, otherwise it echoes. So welcome to the Tuesday. I hope you all had a great holiday season here and it's time to start the next year. So welcome to the Tuesday, uh, meeting of the B O C C. Uh, we'll start with the flag salute if you want to join me.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and into your republic, France, one nation under God and in the just for all.
Hey, the next item of business is a, uh, election of, uh, chair and vice chair. In accordance with policy two, 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 one, two dash, two dash, two dash, one of Callas County, the procedure provides that the board at the first meeting in January in each odd numbered.
Not odd.
It's not odd.
Yeah, each year.
Each year. Each, each year shall hold its annual election. We need to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Annual election of one of its members to serve as chair who shall preside at meetings and be recognized as the head of the county for ceremonial purposes. The board shall also elect a vice chair from among its members who in the absence of the chair shall have the duties of the chair. So at this time I'll turn over the clerk of board for, uh, election of the chair.
Nominations will be made from the floor by the commissioners. Board members need to be recognized by the presiding officer to make a nomination. No second is required. Once all nominations are heard, they will be voted on in order they are received. The vote will be taken for the office of chair first with the results being announced before we proceed to the vice chair election. Are there any questions from the board before I call for nominations? Nominations are now in order for the office of chair of the Callis County Board of Commissioners. Are there any nominations?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Rick Doll for reelection as chair of the board.
Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Seeing or hearing none, nominations are now closed. The board will now vote in the order of the nominations received. All those in favor of board member Commissioner Doll for chair signify by saying aye.
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 The vote is unanimous. The ayes have it and board member Commissioner Doll is elected as chair. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, uh, then I'll take nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I move our Mortenson reelected as vice chair.
Uh, we have a, a motion to, uh, reelect Commissioner Mortensen as vice chair. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for that. That's all the way. Next item, uh, uh, call on Commissioner Mortensen on the minutes.
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Uh, appreciate what you, what you did all last year as chairman and I look forward to that. Uh, th- th- this year and, uh, as usual, I reviewed the minutes of the activities, uh, the last, uh, two weeks or so. And I moved to approve them. Approve the minutes, that is.
We have a motion to, uh, prove the minutes. Questions, corrections, comments?
I've reviewed them too. I have no corrections to be made.
Perfect. Hearing none, seeing none, I call for both those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Now, I'll just say before we get into, uh, the other stuff, uh, I enjoyed serving this last year with you two. I'm, I'm looking forward to the, the next year. Although two thousand twenty-five, I don't know what it holds for me, so, but I will enjoy serving with you both this next year. We'll go through the consent agenda, uh, resolution, electing the chair and vice chair, which we just did. Agreements, contracts, bid awards, uh, Calz County Board of Commissioners committee assignments. Uh, Commissioner Mortensen and, and myself were, looked that over with the, the clerk, Commissioner Weber had a, a under appointment. But we really didn't, we made a couple of corrections, but we didn't make any reassignments that I, that I recall. So it's all pretty much status quo.
There were only two, two areas of potential confusion. One was who's on the board of the Three Rivers, uh, waste water. Think we squared that up. You're alternate, I'm, I'm first. And, uh, on Law and Order, you're first and you're alternate.
Yes.
Okay.
And there, uh, we heard from Law and Order, they're changing that. It's not a more of a quarterly, I think is what they're going to.
If we're agreed with a quarterly, I think what recommendation was, uh, less than that.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it is.
It, it, it was semi-annual and then, uh, we recently got a notice that, uh,
The judges, I think, wanted.
They would like a quarterly, so I, I would suggest we stay on a quarterly schedule.
Yeah. Which is probably easier, yeah. Professional consultant agreement with J P Dur and Van Ness Feldman for attorney services for the Department of Building and Planning. We use this, this group once in a while for some of our work. Uh, the next two, four and five are amendments to, uh, existing services, one with West Coast consultants for plan review services. And another one is professional services agreement with Townsend and Associates, um, for the same thing, sending for planning review services. Six through nine is a Recreation and Conservation Office applicate applicant authorization form. It's a, it's a form that delegates authority for various roles and applying for administering the grants and project. Uh, number six is on the Two Road Outlet Creek Fish Passage Project. Number seven is on the Lappin Road Wine Creek Creek Fish Passage Design Project. Number eight is on the Toodle Road Stude Baker Creek Fish Passage Design Project. And number nine is on the, um, Alender Road Stillwater Creek Fish Passages Project. Number ten is a signed contract with the Main Society of Callas County to operate animal shelter. Um, I think you're all aware that beginning this year in two thousand twenty-four, animal control is now handled through our sheriff's office. The actual, uh, sheltering of the animals is still with the animal, with animal shelter and, and, uh, we come up with a contract with them. And we were handed one that I would, with the commissioner's approval, add to the consent agenda. Uh, Office of Emergency Management gave us an update and we'll make sure this gets available so you can all see it on the, the last, uh, the resolution twenty-three dash oh eight three, the disaster declaration when we had the flooding event in December fifth, two thousand twenty-three. It's just a re- recapping of the events that happened during there.
So a question on that, uh, we should resend this at some point. We send the declaration of emergency. We send the declaration of emergency.
I think that would be appropriate because we're not in a, not in a flood event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind, uh, resolution number twenty-three dash hmm, oh, eight, three.
Then, then our question, should we move this to a motion item then if we're gonna rescind it? I'll take it off consent and move it over to.
That, that's why I hesitate, hesitated. I, I will bow to anyone's superior knowledge on that.
So, I, we'll, we'll just move this over to a motion item and give people a chance if they wanna look at it. Do that, so. System doing here. Uh, letters and correspondence, a letter dated, uh, one, two of twenty-four to Todd Deenhart, appointing him to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We have two letters from, uh, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. One is on, uh, non-federal representation for informal consultation. The other is on seismic hazard assessment on the SWIFT number two. Uh, a letter from, uh, Great Rivers Behavioral telling us of an office location move. And then the affidavit, the posting of the Commissioner's proceed, proceedings for the month of November. Uh, and lastly, vouchers in amount of one million, nine, twenty-one, four, seventy-four and sixty-eight cents.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one question on the first item under, under correspondence, that is, the, the letter, uh, to Doug, Todd Deenhart, um, that I, I know we've received his application to serve. But his position is as a representative of small cities, and I know the cities meet regularly. Do we have confirmation that the smaller cities have are supporting his recommendation? And if not,
Yeah.
can we hold off on it for a week or so? Just, I, I don't want us to appear like we're ignoring two out of the three small cities. The position doesn't come up very often, so I just, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna ignore the other small cities.
Yeah, if I may, uh, the last time we appointed someone from small cities, I, I scoured, uh, Woodland. And, uh, I was told by the then mayor that there was absolutely no interest on his part of diluting his staff effort to attend the meetings. So, uh, it, it's been attempted to include Woodland in, in the past and this time, I think we were successful at, at having a, a single applicant out of there. So, uh,
Boy, I, I don't misunderstand. I, I don't have any opposition with.
Agree completely. Uh, uh, it's difficult for me to say how, if I just want people to be sure that it's this Board's responsibility to appoint, and it's not necessarily, uh, a, a response to a democratic approach of the small cities want or don't want. Uh, we all know that, uh, politics gets to play into this and, uh, I've tried to make it clear the policy issues will stay with the Board. In any event, I don't mind, uh, I don't mind your suggestion. I, I, I.
I, I don't re- recall any correspondence from the other, so I, I, I think that that's appropriate. One week isn't gonna hurt anything and, and just to, uh.
Perhaps Kelly can call and.
Yeah. Tell them that the Commissioners are gonna appoint Todd. Okay. So,
Thank you.
we, we will pull.
All right.
We will pull, uh.
Item eleven A.
Eleven A. Eleven A.
Mister, Mister.
This week's.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda presented to us this morning.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Comments, corrections? I see none. I don't see any hands raised, so we'll take a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, we moved, um, the resolution over to motion items. So, we can address that at this point in time that, uh, we have this letter updated everything that happened and, and, uh, we need to, uh, rescind that. We no longer have that emergency.
I know the Director of Emergency Management is in the audience. Perhaps he can, uh.
You wanna cover anything around?
Clarify. I mean, it's, if, if this is, uh, his recommendation. I know usually there's some paperwork that's hidden away that depends on the emergency resolution, but if we're all okay, uh, good morning.
Good morning. Larry Hembray, Director of Emergency Management, Kalis County. Um, I came this morning, uh, in case you had any questions about any of the, the events that occurred, um. This was my first, uh, declaration and so reached out to several folks that have been, uh, part of these before, uh, Public Works notably and, uh, previous Director, Ernie Schnabler. And, uh, they felt it was prudent to do so, and so we requested the declaration. Fortunately for us, the counties, uh, to our north and our west experienced, um, some damage. We, however, came through pretty unscathed, other than the five oh three, uh, spur, uh, which affected Cougar. Uh, that was repaired, uh, approximately a million dollars emergency damage repair. Um, and is usable at this time.
Now, the, um, temporary repair to the five oh four up at the outlet, the other side of the, the county, did that happen during this event?
No.
Was that, that was earlier?
Yes.
So, all that.
That was last, yes.
Yeah, so, and, and from what I've also heard, uh, there's no expectation to reestablish connections to, uh, Johnston Ridge in the foreseeable future. There's some extensive reengineering of the whole approach that's gonna have.
Yes, and currently, we're having meetings with the Forest Service, State D N R, um, the State, uh, Washington Department of Transportation and our emergency response agencies in talking about a variety of things, but that's one of the things that are currently on the table that we're discussing. How we could better respond to those types of situations.
So, it's your recommendation to go ahead and rescind the emergency?
I, I believe that this emergency is, is through. Um, you know, I, I don't I have not experienced where you would leave one open for just the general purpose of its winter in Kalis County, but I would think that this emergency is through and if we need another declaration, that I would come forward to the Commissioners and request that at that time.
Yeah.
Uh, I certainly appreciate that. Uh, I, I, I often take an opportunity to try and make things properly clear. The reason we had an emergency declaration is that it bypasses certain requirements. And in the typical governmentese way, instead of reviewing the original requirements, we pile on an emergency. We've all been through the last three to four years with uh, emergent emergency overload. And, uh, this is yet another example of, of the tendrils. This was presented to us simply, if you don't declare an emergency, we cannot help people put sand in sandbags to protect their property. Now, you and I would think only an imbecile would not permit someone to protect their property, but apparently, well, I'll stop there. You can read there between the lines and Mr. Chairman, I'll remake the motion that we rescind, uh, uh, resolution twenty-three dash zero eighty-three.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind, uh, resolution twenty-three dash zero eight three. Questions, comments on that? I don't see any hands. I don't see anybody approach. Yeah, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, and I also wanted to make sure and thank Mike Moss, Susan Eugenous and Kelly for their work on helping us put this one together. So, thank you very much.
Um, before I head into, uh, public comments, this, uh, two thousand twenty-four, if you remember, we changed our, our schedule some. On Tuesdays, there's no afternoon business meeting any longer. Uh, we have business meetings on, on Wednesday at one thirty. Um, we have, we've moved all bid openings to Wednesday, plus we have Public Works on Wednesdays. So, you're gonna have, when you see these come up, we'll try to keep you updated on, on what's happening, but the hope is that we get, we reserve time to have a little more in-depth conversation with different departments. They won't be in every week. They'll be in on a schedule and have, have a chance to sit down with them for a little more in-depth, so. Nothing this afternoon? Tomorrow, we have a bid opening and then we have Public Works update. That's it, right? Okay.
If I could add on that? Uh, just a reminder that the reason we do this, the reason we call this a hearing room also is for us to present to the public what is going on. It doesn't only happen on Tuesday, but I, I know it's like trying to, uh, watch paint dry, so I, I don't expect people to show up all the time, but if there are key issues, make sure you take a look at the agenda items. And while we can't guarantee that always every hot item is on there, we make every attempt to do that and it's only emergency things that come up, and I use a very, I use lowercase emergency on that. Things do happen outside of this hearing that are in the public eye.
Okay.
And, uh, before we go to comments, I, I'd just like to do a miscellaneous regarding the
Yeah.
rest area up on, up in the Cougar area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, what, what, what's happened, there's a port of Woodland for some time. What, had a contract with, uh, uh, Pacific Core to operate the river, rest area in Cougar. I, I don't know the exact mileage or anything like that. And, uh, we've been talked to by a fair number of people, including our County uh, the sheriff, and I think the case has been made that that, uh, rest area proves value for the public. What's happened, the Port of Kalama, I think, decided that it, it was too encumbering. Uh, I don't know how much the cost is. I'm trying to get that information. But there always is, like everything else, we're held prisoners to potential lawsuits, potential liability kind of issue. And we're currently exploring that. I think we mentioned this late last year. There is a desire on my part, and I think I have companionship there, to resuscitate that, uh, rest area. It currently is closed. I'm looking forward to us getting something something going as quickly as possible. Uh, would it be a month? Would it be two? I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that's a, um, important piece up in, when you get up there, there's not a whole lot around and.
Uh, Jennifer from the Port of Woodland is available to, to supply that information.
Yeah, I've gotten the old contract, the new contract, uh, and she's currently trying to find me what the costs are, uh, it, and, uh, I, I I, I don't think they can be too onerous, but who can tell?
Yeah.
And in, in that case, mechanically or process-wise, we go through LTAC, the Lodging Tax Advisory Council. Depending on where the dollars come from, right?
Yeah.
And, and who would be? Would that be something the building, uh, our, our facilities management department would take care of?
No, I think we would look, apparently Pacific Core has done a good job of managing, uh, well, I, I'd have to look at the details. I, I, I don't know whether they got involved in anything too much. It's their property, but it's unfortunately complicated. I, I don't understand it, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, but the answer might be that, yes. So, unless you and I would like to get our grass whipped and head out that way.
We're gonna, or we can get you a mop and a bucket and put another, your assignment on there.
That would, that would be for the younger man of the team.
Okay. Public comment? Anything burning a hole? Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Good morning. Happy New Year, Commissioners. Um, uh, my comment today is just acknowledging the fact that we're starting this new year without a public health officer. Um, I know public health is not always forefront in everyone's mind. It works best when it's invisible. It just takes care of the waters and the food permits and tracing communicable diseases when they come up. But we currently don't have a health officer to fulfill many of those invisible functions. And I'm frankly disappointed in our Board of Health in failing to fulfill their duty to appoint a health officer. Prior to the start of this year, we had two excellent health officers through regional sort of shared services with Clark County. Those health officers served numerous counties at a great benefit to those communities and not having to employ their own health officers full-time. Um, so I'm perplexed why we are starting this year without that support and services. I don't know what happens if someone shows up in the hospital with tuberculosis or hepatitis or some other reportable condition. I don't know what happens to the nurses working in our public health department. Are they still able to operate without a licensed physician overseeing the work? I don't know. I think public health is important to our community. And I think it is the job of our Board of Health to keep our county with a public health officer. So, uh, just wanted to call out that we are starting this year with a deficit in our overall infrastructure and capacity to, to address public health issues without that critical position of a health officer. I think it would be important for the community to understand what this path forward is. Is the state going to be appointing a health officer for us? Is there any opportunity to reach back out and negotiate again with Clark County to see if they would, after all, be willing to provide us with the shared health officer services that they have in the past? But we need some sort of path forward. We need to know that this important function is, is in place and intact in our community. Thank you.
What I, what I, I can tell you, and I don't wanna speak for the Board of Health, but I know we have at least one resume, if not two resumes, coming in to fill that position. The whole desire is to find a, a person that actually represents the people and just doesn't regurgitate what the state and the Fed tells them to regurgitate. As, as far as the, the signing of documents and stuff, that, that, that's unfortunate. We're trying to, and we'll, I think, uh, you have a regional health officers, and I think we're, um, our Human Health Service could speak better to this than me, but I think we're working with other counties to help with some of those services, but I would, I would hopefully encourage the same kinda address to our state legislature is why they would put together a program where they say only one person in your county has the ability to make these kind of decisions. How, that's nonsensical. It doesn't make any sense to me. We have plenty of talented people. And for them to put, say, a county only has one person that can do, make these determinations, uh, leaves me baffled why they would do that, but, but, uh, I do know that we are working through the process and we're working to put a person in there that really is a, a public-minded and, and work with the people. And like I said, we have one, if not two, I believe another one was in the works. And and I think that'll be corrected fairly fairly quickly. I I can't give you a timeframe, but I think it'll be fairly quick.
Yeah, that's the case. I I this has been discussed for a long time, and there are all kinds of issues along the way. A key emphasis would be what the chairman said. We already know that a doctor has to sign a death certificate. We already know the coroner can sign a death certificate, but for some magical reason, the world has made best even excellent if we have a health officer to sign a death certificate also. Mind boggling until you understand that the purpose of government is like every other entity that uses power or force to get its way. It grows. And when you can make people pay the bill without their consent, you've got an unstable situation, which is what we've got here. Also, yeah. The it is part of the job of the Board of County Commissioners to oversee all kinds of operations in the county. And one of the metrics always has to be performance. And that has been an issue that we've discussed any number of times. And it does not escape me that even Lewis County, the county to the north, previously had a contract with the same people we had the contract, and they terminated that contract or did not continue it. I I I don't know the exact answer to that. And the chairman is correct. We are in contact with several options. I would also throw out the concept that in the infinite wisdom of the RCWs, you know, the legislature, they have all kinds of contingencies in there that, of course, bubble the power up to higher higher areas. Like, there's not only a county health officer, there's a regional health officer. The regional health officer is supposed to step in. And if you you you've got to pour through the the invisible dictates there because I frequently don't understand them. However, the idea of a regional health officer is that occasionally your health officer might not be available to you. In some cases, it might be a disaster, and your health officer is no longer available for sometime, and you need a new health officer. Well, the regional health officer is supposed to step in and handle that. Well, you know how long it takes for us to get things done? If you even think about getting something done in a two-week timeframe, those things just don't happen in the government arena. When you look at the Board of Health, it's a committee of a bunch of interests that meets. Well, thankfully for our for our chairman of the Board of Health, we meet more frequently, but typically it was required to meet only once a quarter. So presumably, you could be without a health officer for a quarter unless we called an emergency. Again, you should be cued into the word emergency. Emergency is a way we in government can crawl into your mind and cause things to happen that may or may not have reasonable justification. But whenever you call emergency, the world's gonna end. Anyhow, I I I I I don't think we have any significant issues here other than to find the right individual who will speak on behalf of common sense. That includes the reality that the CDC and the state Board of Health that did not show common sense during the during the COVID, the data has come out a plenty that lots of egregious things happened. And again, the magic word was emergency. So I ask people, just relax. Don't go panicky. Things will be handled pretty well. Tomorrow will come. I don't know if the sun will shine, but it'll be out there beyond the clouds.
So so one of the pattern of events that occurred was that last year, the board did call for a request for qualifications. The the Board of Health did, you know, that's part of their responsibilities. And we supported going forward with a request for qualifications. The only folks who applied were the folks that were providing the service from Clark County. And the the motion was made to approve, and the board chose not to 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 do that. The the other the other interest, and and so that's kind of where we were at. As the contract came to an end, we received the letter that Clark County health officers resigned their Callis County connections. It is a decision that has to be made by the Board of Health. And so we have to find out if we have a a chairman. Because there's some some concern that his term came to an end in June. We haven't had those elections since. So it is a little bit more confusing than that. I I would tell you, though, that if you have a birth of someone whose parents work overseas and they've got airline tickets to head back, not being able to get a death certificate promptly is a big concern. And and in my conferencing with the health department, our health department, the system that we had did allow for very quick turnover. That was one of the areas that we did have really good turnover in in getting birth certificates. The other course area is with death certificates, delays in death certificates means a delay in settling estates. And, you know, there's going to be some emotional emotional turmoil. So we just need to anticipate that there are going to be some folks who are upset. The decision, the course of decisions that we made is doing precisely what we don't want, and that is we're making it more complicated rather than less complicated. We had a system that worked well in terms of issuing birth certificates and worker oh, food permits and death certificates. I had a call last month from a widow who was distraught that that she couldn't get the death certificate. And two days later, I asked her again if it went. She said, oh, not a problem. I was really thankful that they processed it. They processed it as quickly as they were able to do. So in terms of those three major functions, issuing worker food permits and birth certificates and death certificates, we we had a system that was very effective. It will be interesting to see what happens at the next community celebration, which I think is sponsored by the Council Longview Chamber of Commerce called Squatch Fest. If there are food vendors, whether they can get the licenses in time, because that's happening some mid mid month. So again, our our goal is to have government services delivered efficiently. That's our overall goal. The inability to take care of this is what we've met the enemy. And you know who they are?
I would suggest the enemy is the system. Once again, one person is all we think can handle that job in Callis County. Nonsense. Go ahead.
And I I would just totally agree. I think, again, there's aspects of government that are broken. And you can keep going along with the brokenness and sometimes take that easier road. But many times, it's that harder right that's important that we consider and find ways through the process and not be as accepting of just the easy way necessarily, but look for the best and look for, again, the overall, the benefit to the citizens of Callis County. I just, in part, just want to commend you Commissioners for your willingness to stop for a second and say, we're not just looking at status quo. We're not looking at continuing to just do things because that's the way it's always been done. I feel like you do a great effort of stopping for a minute and saying, really, how does this benefit our community? Is this the right thing? Is there other solutions? Is there something we should look into? There's nothing wrong with that as long as it comes to a conclusion. It's interesting. The general public sometimes looks that change, obviously, as some horrible thing. Oh, my goodness, this is different. When they need to maybe stop for a second and listen to what you have to say. But I think, again, Commissioner Mortensen is very good about articulating people's words and making sure that things are understood. I think that's important as a county commission to again, articulate the fact that this is why we're looking into a different way, and this is why we chose this as opposed to the status quo. And most importantly, this is how it benefits you, people of Callis County. Then again, an argument comes back and says, well, I disagree with you. Well, fine. What's your disagreement? And resolve that through a discussion and see if maybe there's some adjustment or some considerations that aren't there. But at least we're talking about facts that are out there or be able to be able to point to things that these are the whys. You know, not just, again, this is my I like fishing, so everything I do is around what makes it best for my fishing. You know, that's not always best for the people of Callis County.
I I would absolutely agree with you. That discussion is needed. It was needed last summer when the 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 request for qualifications were turned down and nothing was done. So.
And I don't and and Commissioner Weber, I don't I don't disagree. Okay. But again, and you have proven again, because we still need to move on. We still have the issue, you know. So again, we can rehash would have, could have, should have. But we need to say, here we are today. And so what are we going to do about that? And how can we alleviate in the future? I totally agree with with Commissioner Dahl that what my grab, one person, again, we should make it easier. The process ought to be easier. So we need to maybe, and I say we, I'm thinking of talking about all the citizens here in Callis County, too, need to get with our local legislators and say, look, let's fix this. Because we shouldn't be so dependent upon one person, you know, to make some seemingly simple things, you know, harder because of the process. And so again, I just I feel like you guys are trying very hard as a commissioner as commissioners to make that process a little bit more user friendly. Sometimes there's pain in getting all that changes done. And sometimes, again, things are missed. But then it's, you know, move ahead because you're right, tomorrow, maybe the sun won't come up, but the sun will come up again. You know, and we will have, we need to have more positivity in in all that we do. And I just I just acknowledge the fact that I think you guys are working hard and not just for the people that elected you, but for all of Callis County. And I just whatever I can do to help you, I'm I'm willing to support that as well.
Interesting, you know, I I've quibbled often by the language we use, and I appreciate the gentleman's discussion. And he used the term always has been done that way in the proper sense, in that that is not necessarily a rationale of why you should do something in the future because you did so in the past without analyzing all the ramifications of that that particular action. I would say, though, that is a is a has two edges to it. Always has been done is a term that suggests that we've got gotten here today by means of years and years of the same action. But in fact, we all know the legislature meets and there are potential actions of in the thousands annually of laws that you didn't know you needed. The reason you didn't know you needed it is because you don't. But that's that that that's a different issue. So when people say always has been done that way, they're just saying that's the status quo saying, don't change anything. I'm in charge here. And that's why we kind of argue against the always has been done that way. And it's a it's a valid argument. Along those lines, another, I'll expand a little bit, another misuse phrase that impacts us tremendously as a nation, not so much to the in the county, although one could argue that nation of immigrants.
Well,
the immigrants today are very different than the immigrants of yesterday and hundred years ago and so forth. The big difference is that the circumstances aren't the same at all. And to claim that because we are a nation of immigrants, you see me using that phrase, because we are a nation of immigrants, it must be okay to accept anything and everything that it has a title immigrants on it. That's the means by which government and the legislature gets his hand on you, grabs your brain, grabs your emotions, twists it, and guess who pays for that? Well, I'd say you do. But in fact, I'd be lying to you a little bit. You know who pays for that? Your kids and your grandkids. And potentially, in the future, it's all done on the crew fetid card of the United States. Well, it is the new year, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just I just want to support Mr. Olson's position, the gentleman that just spoke. I do think this is a rare opportunity for our county to look at how the public health system works. And if there can be changes that help things make things a little bit better, that make more common sense, I appreciate that. It causes chaos and and some panic on some people's parts. But I do believe we have in place a way to manage that. And I think the OCC Board of Commissioners are smart in taking their time and working with the Board of Health and whatever is available in the community to review how inappropriate maybe some of the public health system works and make it work better. And I like that, that it's given the opportunity of the given the public a chance to say, wow, we're crazy, or wow, the Board of Health is moving slow and looking more methodically at things. And I appreciate that, that there is chaos. It helps create change, and it makes maybe a better system. Thank you.
Lyndy, you might you might no, you you might just share that you are on that health board and were part of the discussion.
Yeah, I'm Lyndy Campbell. I'm on the Board of Health, and I share the same feelings about some of the concerns with a health officer not in place. I'm a retired RN. But I appreciate the fact that the there is a regional health officer that can be available and that there is no reason to panic, that we have some common sense involved here. And I appreciate moving more slowly. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question about the process in general. So let's say the Board of Health meets and chooses, it says, we want this person as a health officer. Now, then that comes before the Board of County Commissioners, because the way things are split, only this board can make the decision to extend a contract or something of that nature. So I don't know what the nuances there are. They will need to be explored unless you folk, unless Dennis or you already know the answer.
I think our attorney outlined the process.
Yeah, but our attorney outlines lots of processes that are in keeping with things that we know aren't necessarily they're legal, but not necessarily common sense. And and I know that's sort of blasphemy that I should say that. Don't misunderstand me. I truly appreciate our civil deputies. They are indeed in my book, top notch. Their job is to is to tell us is to tell us if we're going to step on that, that's a mess the dogs left. You don't want to do that. Our job is to say, I got to get from here to there, and the dog mess is in the way. Maybe I have to step into the dog mess. So it's two different situations. This board, like I mentioned earlier, is going to be assiduously protecting the policy obligations, because we know we're responding to what our fundamental oath of office is, and that's you are And that's you are our bosses and to abdicate that to. Unelected groups makes things a little, a little awkward and to abdicate it to. Administrative agencies is something that is. Should be avoided.
Yeah. But my understanding is that I would, I would guess that the resumes or whatever will come in. Do the Human and Health Services and then the Board of Health would call a meeting and want to go over and and. Probably as the Board of Health would decide, make it some kind of decision which way to go and then. Of course, because it's a contract, then the commissioners at their next meeting would have to ratify and approve something of that nature.
So if we have a a problem with the bylaws pointing out that the term for the chairman expired in June. Which I think is what we discovered last week. Who calls the special meeting? Or are we not calling one until the regularly scheduled quarterly meeting?
Actually, there was a question, a Q and A question, when is the next scheduled Board of Health meeting?
The next Board of Health is Tuesday, January thirtieth.
Tuesday, January.
January thirtieth.
Thank you. There is an interesting thing in law that I found curious. I I say it in laws if I know for sure. I don't know anything for sure until I talk to enough individuals. Let's say, in my case, we go through a. Period of time. When nobody signs up for the. For the election of the new commissioner. Then come the end of the year, we have no new, no new. Commissioner, without asking any questions as to why we got into that situation, I believe the law says. That the person sitting in that chair on the in December, the last day in December. Will continue to sit in that chair until some other action is taken to replace the individual.
I think so.
I beg your pardon?
I don't think so. Not with, not when the term comes to an end. But there were other organizations who have, who have have bylaws that say. You stay in office until their successor is appointed. That's a common language. That's missing in our bylaws.
Let's see, do we have? Well, that that might be an offshoot to explore, but.
Yeah, it's probably something we needed.
I mean, my my point there is whether. We we've got all kinds of issues with the bylaws that we we knew we had to refine over. Over time, it doesn't make sense to get yourself in the catch twenty-two. So I say the common sense thing is. We'll deal with it on Tuesday at the end of January. Or earlier, if I I claim we could call another board meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we could, we could declare the chair position vacant. When we revert back to what the way it was before, and that was the chair of this commission, call the meeting of the board to resolve the issue, so. I mean, we could, we could do it that way, yeah, if if we need to act earlier.
Yeah, I I I think this all was precipitated because of the health officer, but I don't see anything we've currently discussed. We'll tackle the fact that tomorrow someone wants a certificate signed.
So they won't get it.
Maybe.
Yeah, thank you so much for the discussion on this topic. I do think it's important and I appreciate everyone's input. And I, it certainly is within the Board of Health's purview to reconsider who the health officer is. But it seems like if you're going to do that, there should have been a clear process to do that. Back in, I believe it was June, when the RFQ first was requested and and put forward. I asked, what what are the quality performance concerns for the health officer? That this this position is being reissued in RFQ for. And I was told at the time by Mr. Mortensen, and it was just a pro forma thing, that there there were no concerns. It was just a matter of procedure. Well, clearly, that's not the case, because when the opportunity to renew the contract came up, it was rejected. And so if the Board of Health is dissatisfied with the performance of the health officer. There was plenty of meetings in between June and when we needed a new health officer for that discussion to take place. And I. In in terms of dissatisfaction with how the system for public health works, the need for a public health officer. The one person to make a decision. That's, that's in statute of our our state laws. That's not something that the county has the authority to change. We are legally required to, that that position is is established in statute. And there are reasons that you want a qualified person in that position. Someone with a detailed knowledge of communicable disease and the way it transmit, the way. There's a lot of different regulations related to public health from water to sewage to. Food safety to all sorts of different things. You need someone with a broad understanding of public health with experience in that field. So it's it's not a simple position to recruit for. That's why we should have had a better process in place and one that was transparent. That the intention was to move away from the shared services contract with Clark County. That discussion wasn't had at all, and it wasn't until the eleventh hour. When we were about to run out of health officer services, we had only one response to the RFQ. That issues of, you know, concern about the information the health officer provided were were raised as a concern. So I think that's a poorly handled process. Sounds like the Board of Health has a lot of improvement to do in terms of process if they don't even know that they have a commission. A chairman that's not supposed to be the chairman anymore, and they can't. Manage their duty to, you know, provide a recommendation to the board of who the health officer should be. I think that should be the first priority in the new year for the Board of Health is to get their process in order. So that these types of things don't happen in the future. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's interesting. This is the second time the gentleman has mentioned it that sometime close to June. I didn't. Address any shortcomings there. It is really interesting that. In this world, we have a conflation of issues time and time again. At the time, it wasn't appropriate to discuss, so I just said, no, I'm not going to discuss that essentially. And it is. Something that doesn't ever close the door. It is rather. In any event, prior to that time, if you inquire with HHS. And you inquire with, with the health officers at the time. It would be clear that there were issues, significant issues. That certainly I had with them. To protect the innocent, I am not typically going to go into the public arena and argue. About things. I'd rather not make things personal. And there are some things that. I want to be able to handle in in sort of a common sense approach. The obligation for this health officer discussion actually began. Well over a year ago. And there have been plenty of opportunities for people, including the gentleman who spoke, to have. Come up and express issues. I have mentioned, without saying any details specifically, there were shortcomings. Now, the details I will offer always is. We spent a lot of money and we didn't get good results out of it. That's my obligation to the people is to spend money and get good results, not bad results. If you look at things, you might say, in all of Callas County, is there not one doctor who feels a sense of. Obligation to fulfill a largely perfunctory job? I have trouble, going back to the legislature, this thing about. Health emergencies and all that, where. Where a regional, where a health officer stuck in place and then we need the hierarchy. We we've already discussed that, could discuss it. More. Back to the gentleman's concern about. Blind signing the, the, the. The previous health officers. It is not uncommon for us to receive an RFQ and for us simply to say. No, that isn't good enough. We've, we've done that in a number of times when we go out for a job and it comes back with. To change a doorknob isn't costing you three. Three hundred thousand dollars. Well, we're not going to accept that bid, even though it may be the only bid. So there there's nothing unusual about that. In fact, when we get only one bid, that tends to set off an. An alarm on things that other things need to be looked at. It is sort of common public perception that. A person occupying a spot in this government. Personal. Services Agreement hierarchy has a job that the incumbent. Always has the edge up. So if I'm looking from the outside in, I'm saying, why do I even bother to apply? Because I know I'm just going to spend my time and they're just going to humor me and I'm not going to get the job. We all understand that. That's one of the elements we fight against, or at least. I do personally fight against is you only have your job today. As long as you're doing a good job. So. This wasn't. I'll stop there, but I it it could, it could get a little uglier.
Well, it seems like there's a considerable amount of history about how we got where we're at. And I personally don't have any desire to be. Throwing stones backwards at how we got where we are. I guess I am interested in how we get from here to a solution. And what has to happen to move that forward to get to a reasonable solution. I firmly believe very strongly in local control and I think that. You're, it's really wishful thinking to think we're going to point a finger at Olympia and say, you need to fix this. You might as well be throwing a rock in the Columbia River and then try and find it again. It's a waste of time. I'd like to see a local solution. I know that we all get tangled up with state law says this and state law says that. But somewhere within reason, I I gotta believe that we can come up with a solution locally. That doesn't violate the state law, but at the same time, works reasonably for the citizens of Callas County. So I wish you the best of luck to move that forward.
The comment I have on that is. You address state laws if state law was completely unambiguous. And there are always little nuances. We have. We have tons of laws which are sort of skirted around the edge. That's why we have so many lawyers. They get paid to. Twist the language around into something they would like. In 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 this case, the, it's like I. Heard from that orca probably eight years ago or longer. The legislature has a concept and then the administrative people grab a hold of that and make a mess out of it, that they don't even. Recognize that they, the legislators don't look at this and I, did I say that? And so I'm very aware that we, one cannot change the state law. However, if we do not speak up about the iniquities in the state law, it won't change. If we don't talk to our state legislators, it won't change. Things aren't going very well there and they should hear about it. One way to do that is just not to genuflect immediately. And we are looking for a good solution with no pretense that we're going to change the Olympia rules.
No, I would absolutely pursue both avenues. I mean, I wouldn't say. Let's do everything local and ignore the state law. I would still push forward through our legislators to fix it. At the same time, locally, it has to be a solution. You can't just wait for them to respond.
Well, let me explore that one. Let me ask the gentleman here. If tomorrow, or maybe even today, we got an agreement from the health officer out of one of the neighboring counties. Or maybe not even the neighboring counties, just a county in Washington State. If that health officer said, look, I understand the situation you're in. Write me up a quick contract and I'll sign all of your stuff. I'll take care of all the. Pedestrian mundane perfunctory functions. Would that be legal? It would be practical in my book. So anyhow, there 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 are things we're exploring. I think for the person who gets the death certificate or the permit to operate. First, I might ask, do you realize what the health officer actually? Does in these circumstances? HHS is here, we got an applicant for food things, our inspector went out and everything's okay. Okay, he signs it.
I only have a vague, probably, understanding of everything that he's required to do. Is it a full-time job?
No, as it is, actually, probably.
I think it's about a, I think it's about a quarter, one weeks a month. Equivalent, I mean, it's not specifically by day, but on.
On a day-to-day basis, it's pretty generic.
Very generic, not even a day basis. The gentleman sitting behind you, the. Kelly Lane has asked this question any number of times. Maybe if he wouldn't mind, he'd tell us what. He has found out about the time commitment.
That works. Thank you for the the meeting. I wanted to clarify a few things. One, that the decision is in the hands of the B OCC to to act on the. On the the health officer, and I am confident it's in good hands and it will be resolved pretty quickly, number one. Number two, as for for the last question, the health officer, I've been told by HHS that the typical. The typical time for a health officer is from zero to two hours per week. So maybe one day per week, but it's typically less than two hours a week. Furthermore, the certificates that are in question are actually not signed by the health officer. This is something I just learned. The the HHS has two or more official registrars. That use the health officer's name and sign it to the certificate. So the health officer is actually never, doesn't even see them often. So these certificates that are being produced, they do have a very fast turnaround, which I was surprised. It's a one-day typical turnaround. There might be a little delay or two, but that's how the system works. Last point I'd have is, do you have any question? Commissioners have any questions on that part of it?
In the absence of a health officer, those registrars are not able to sign legally.
They can't use his digital signature.
Thank you.
Could they use the the regional health officer's digital signature?
From from what I've been told, they will be able to, once they sign an agreement with the state. Regional health officer or even one of their epidemiologists has stepped up to ask or offer help. Then yes, they will, I guess, change it in the computer and use his digital signature. So, and then in reference to the chairmanship. This is the first I've heard of it. You said, Commissioner Weber, that this has come up a couple of weeks ago. I wish I was notified. I didn't know that. This is the first I've heard of it, number one. Number two, I think it's a mistake. Uh, when I, uh, joined the board in June, I believe, um, at that point, uh, you elected me to be the chair, but we didn't have any kind of bylaws set. So the bylaws didn't get passed until January. And at the bylaws, at the time that we passed the bylaws, that's when it specified the chairperson's term and everybody's terms. And I believe at that time, I'm going to go back and look at the minutes, we re-elected me. So that was January. So I believe I am, as far as I'm, uh, as far as my understanding goes, I am still as the chair and I will serve as you like. Um, and when the next meeting is determined to call the next meeting, I'll do it how's we want. And at that point, we are supposed to re-elect a chairperson according to the bylaws.
So, so Kelly, the bylaws say we have quarterly meetings, but we have one scheduled in January. Is that the first of the quarterly meetings? Or was that a special meeting you established?
The quarter, the quarterly meetings have now been superseded to monthly meetings.
Bylaws haven't been changed.
Bylaws were not changed. And when I asked about that, they, the, I believe the clerk told me that it's in the minutes and the meeting and the actual motion that sets the, the precedent, I guess.
But in your powers as chairman, you can call special meetings.
Special meetings can be called at any time.
Yep. Okay. So, yeah, as, as soon, if we get a candidate, then we can have a special meeting. Yeah, get that official. You, you had mentioned that this board can hire the health officer. My understanding is from the lawyers that no, that's the Board of Health's responsibility.
No, I mean, contract, do the contract.
But the, but the appointment has to come from the health board.
This is correct.
Okay.
So I'm at your, your service and that's why I'm here this morning.
Anything else?
I guess I still don't understand if you've gone out for, uh, the RFQ or the request for, uh, and nobody's responded. If you didn't.
No, one, one party responded.
That was Clark County?
Yeah.
But it was, uh, they, uh, basically because of past performance or whatever, that was not acceptable?
Well, according to somebody. I mean.
According to, well, the decision of the board.
The decision of the board was two to one.
Okay.
To reject the qualifications.
Okay. So if the qualifications were rejected and there was only one applicant, then what do you do? How do you go forward from there? I mean, reissue the request or?
We've done that.
Go knock on doors, doctors' offices?
All of the above.
Okay.
It's a work in progress.
So how soon would you, would RFQ be issued again or pursued?
It was reissued, um, November?
November, okay. And no response at this point?
We have received some responses. I prefer to let HHS answer. They're collecting.
Yeah, I, I don't see HHS on. I was gonna ask them also.
The qualifications all go to the department first and then they report to us.
Okay. Thank you.
And if, and I, I don't know if we can get them on. I'd like to see if I can contact them later, but see where they are on that, an agreement with the regional. It doesn't mean people have to drive up to Olympia to get it. It's just a matter of who we, whose, uh, signature we're authorized to digitally sign.
In, in fact, under normal operation, as I understand it from HHS, our health officer was seen, uh, once a month, that is in person, once a month. And of course, the onus was much heavier during the, during the COVID thing when we had a lot of hearings and, but with DocuSign and with, uh, Zoom or Teams, uh, we don't have to sacrifice quality.
Why was there only one applicant? I mean, is there a reason? I mean, there's gotta be some reason for that, right?
If I could, I'll take a, take a shot at there. I, I, I don't know because I'm not one of the applicants, but having been in comparable situations from the outside, I mentioned, uh, uh, an element earlier that the incumbent is always viewed as having the leg up on it. So it's like discouraging anybody else from applying because I'll, it's just, uh, w- waste of time.
Gina just joined us. She's the one that can probably answer.
Well, she, she, she may have a different insight, but I'll continue and then turn it over. Then we've just listened here, descriptions of what the job is. If anybody went away here and said, boy, those people really know what that job is, you'd be surprised. I'd be surprised. The point being is if I'm outside, am I going to look in at this when I have no idea how much it pays, what the burden on the hours is, what, what am I committing to and so forth? Uh, it's really not surprising to me that we haven't had a lot of people speak.
So basically what you're saying is that, uh, on the application, it's not been described well? So that people don't have the information about this job and what it entails? Is that what you're saying?
We don't issue the application from this office.
Okay.
Again, somebody from the department can, is in a position to answer those questions.
Okay, maybe they aren't doing a good job as far as promoting.
Well, let's find out from person.
Yeah, let me be a little more, let's be a little more careful there. We, we all know that we, when we were applying for jobs, you look at the job description and what you end up doing in the job description may not coincide to a hundred percent, may not even coincide to five or ten percent. I've had people in the past apply for a job where it says college degree mandatory. And I would talk to them and I'd say, okay, we'll bypass that. It's, it, it, it is guidelines to help people, but as time has gone on, uh, it doesn't have a whole lot of meaning. It, it, I, I could go on.
Yes, I, I, and I totally understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is, um, from what I, I understand from hearing this, that the job description is not appealing because nobody is, is, um, applying. And maybe it's the wage. I don't know. I don't know any of all that.
Let me go to Gina in this case.
But for some rea, there is a reason and there's, you know, I understand the reasons that you gave, but I, I think it probably needs to be delved into because not getting anyone, uh, there, there's a, a deeper reason there. There's something there that, that could be fixed, I think, possibly.
How many idle doctors do you know? Idle doctors do you know?
You'd be surprised.
I would be.
Because, uh, yeah, they're, they're, they're as busy as they want to be. And I've had certain doctors that basically, of course, I've left their practice for different reasons. Uh, but they had plenty of spare time. It depends on how much, how many patients they are willing to take and how much they want to put out and what, and if they are under peace health. And as you guys know, other, other entities, uh, then, and they're being, you know, they have a contract. But they, yes, they have, they have time. They make time.
Gina?
Hey, good morning. Gina James, Health and Human Services. I was trying to think back. There was a specific question I could help with.
Well, uh, I, I, what I was asking is we can use, it was described that the, the doctor doesn't actually sign these things or we have people that are authorized to use their di- digital signature. So if, and it sounded like we were, and you can correct me, but it, it sounded like we were in the process of getting that agreement with the, the regional to use their dig, digital signature or maybe uh, uh, another county's or, or something of that nature.
So we could, we could use, um, we could go down the road of the regional medical officer. What the state has said is that we would need an agreement signed. The Board of Health would have to initiate that action. And, and the Board of Health would need to appoint the regional medical officer as our local health officer for the short term. So there's, um, an agreement that would have to be, um, reviewed and signed. And then there's also an appointment that would have to be made by the Board of Health for that person to be able to fill in. And then we could work with them on being able to pick up processing our, our certificates and whatnot.
And that, that would satisfy the, the signature stuff for death certificates, birth certificates, health, food handling, whatever, whatever it is, right?
Correct. Yeah. But it's sort of a two, uh, as I mentioned, a two-step process where it has to be initiated. Um, we can't as a department, uh, initiate it. It has to be sort of the Board of Health and they have to make an appointment um, for that person to fill in for us, for our health officer.
Any? Okay. I'm just trying to think through, uh, time-wise, what that takes. Probably not a long process. It's just steps that have to be taken.
Yeah, I think the most, um, complicated part would probably be calling a special Board of Health meeting, um, just to get everyone together. The agreement is pretty straightforward and that can be, that was already sent out, um, to the Board of Health members. Um, and that's, that part is pretty straightforward and the state sent sort of a clear guidance on what steps need to be taken um, to get the ball rolling with that piece of it.
So then, once that agreement's in, in place, then that agreement lasts until we fulfill, fill that position.
The, the state will only approve it for two weeks is my understanding. For a two-week period of time and then it can be revisited. And I'm not, I'm not sure. They were unclear if they would be willing to go beyond a two-week period because they're, um, my understanding is the intention is for that position to only cover during, um, short-term, um, you know, a, a health officer's on vacation or in the hospital or what have you.
Well, and that's what the purpose behind them was in the first place.
Except that there, there really needs to be a provision for the case where something awful happens and your health officer was in a plane crash. And, uh, if you're meeting quarterly, how do you deal with that? Yes, you, you get an emergency put together, but we've been struggling to find a health officer for a year. And, uh, to have a pretense that, uh, the absence in this catastrophic situation lasts only two weeks is ridiculous. That puts it, I think squarely back on the reg- regional health officer.
Can, can I interject too that the, that the, what you said earlier about the system being broken or dysfunctional is that if the regional health officer can be appointed by the Board of Health for, and it was told to us that it was for vacations and situations where the health officer is out of town. But that would mean that technically the Board of Health has got to convene and appoint every single time that the vacation is taken. So if, for example, uh, tomorrow there was a meeting called and we appointed the regional health officer, uh, for two weeks, he would come in. We would have to do it again if we didn't have another officer. If we did have an officer step up to the, to the position later on, if he wanted to take a vacation in summertime, we would have to again take a Board of Health meeting, reappoint the health officer, uh, the regional health officer. And so every time there's a vacation needed or a break, uh, the meeting has to be declared and an appointment made. I don't know if there's a way to get around that. I don't know if that's RCWs or.
Yeah, actually. For the last 12 years I've been on this commission, that system has been, you have, you have an assistant health officer, which was what Dr. Craigan served as, our health officer was, was Dr. Melnick. And he was here all the time. He was just kind of the permanent substitute. So that's, that's a very, uh, tried and true method to make sure you've got coverage. You just make agreements with an assistant. And we agree to, but, but that doesn't, we gotta get the, the, the ball rolling though initially, so.
Sorry. What I, I'll just add, what I saw recently that happened with another county, the way they addressed that was they, um, they appointed the regional medical officer as their backup and they specified the, um, the scenarios, same as the state does, that says, you know, on vacation in the case of, you know, your health officer is in, you know, in the hospital or what have you. So they don't have to convene a meeting each time that that happens. They made the appointment saying this person's appointed as our backup in these scenarios. Um, so that then they just have to work with the regional medical officer on the dates for coverage. So they, um, were able to do that through just, uh, an appointment resolution. Um, so they don't have to convene each time someone goes on vacation. Yeah.
That's good. So, I, 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 I get the issue on, I, I, I'm not big on delaying people's certificates and stuff like that. I still, it, I find it crazy that they, they assign all that to just one, one person, but, but, um, what's your guys feeling on? I mean, I'm not opposed to calling a meeting in the BOH to make an appointment if that's a desire. Make sure those perfuncture duties are taken care of.
I think at least to get the, the state's regional officer on board, we need to have a special meeting as soon as is practical, which is at least a 24-hour notice, whatever. Then we also have to have a meeting later this week.
Yeah.
To go through the financial part. I mean, that's our obligation to make sure they get paid. So.
Yeah.
At least get that temporary thing going.
Yeah. So, uh,
I, i- in a situation like that, the contract negotiations may, may take a little more time. We should be scared of, of contracts in general and be very careful. But I think once a health officer is appointed, that action should be able to flow from that. And if we can't reach a final agreement as to pay, well, we have to go through it again, but I don't think it's, I think we should be able to act quickly.
Yeah. But I, I kinda like the, the idea of what she explained in another county is using the regional as
Right.
Kinda, you just set up that agreement. So when you have these instances, when, when they're out of town, not, not just that we don't, haven't filled it, that you have that, that backup. And so I wouldn't be opposed to calling a, a meeting in the BOH just to take care of, of that issue.
The, the only thing I'd modify on that is, uh, today would be the regional Board of Health, but tomorrow I hope we can get enough information out and enough doctors interested that we can appoint the primary and the secondary.
Right.
From within the county.
And, and if we do, then
Correct.
Wouldn't need that agreement. I, I'm just trying to think in between whatever this
I think.
gap is.
Yeah, I'm sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, I would ask you to work with him and get that scheduled as quickly as possible. We'll try and get that taken care of. You good with that? Okay.
Oh.
So we'll try and, Gina, we'll try and convene the Board of Health as, as quickly as we can and, and maybe work through that agreement. I liked the, the idea of where the one county just kind of had it more, more general, not specific. So any, anytime we ran into a problem, vacation, whatever, then, then we'd have that backup.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Concerns? Anything else from my colleagues? We will, uh, we will get that scheduled, send a notice out and take care of that. And, uh, I see no other hands. We will call this adjourned. I see no other hands. We will call this adjourned. Thank you.